It's been rocky to be here.
I think we're gonna be done, cuz I've got it figured out. Got it? Okay, we are back in session for the budget talks, budget. Our finalization of our 2026 budget. And at this time, I'll reconvene the meeting and ask Mr. Danzel, have we come up with a remedy? Or should I be asking?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I, after yesterday's hearing, I spoke with Tim Anderson. We kinda came up with a list of ideas here that would, that would get us to being balanced. And so if you have any questions on these, just let me know. I think that we've already spoken about a couple, yes, I know we spoke about this yesterday, so I'll just get into it. We are able to balance the budget if we were able to make the cuts to the four positions out of corrections. Reducing the prosecuting attorney's budget by approximately $100,000 as you had asked for. The assessor had offered to remove the non, I believe it was the GIS non-specialist position, is that correct?
I'd like to remove the tech because I'd like to move ours to the specialist, one of those two.
Yes.
We're only gonna fill one position, one person.
So about, it totaled about $90,000.
And maybe a little more.
And maybe a little bit more. Added 120,000 to sales tax. We added 25,000 to investment earnings and 25,000 to investment interest. Now, again, this is still your budget to determine. But that right there gets us fully balanced for the 2026 budget year.
Okay, so four positions from corrections or two positions?
Well, that's what I wanted to talk about.
Okay.
We had, we had spoken yesterday about if we could, that four positions would be ideal. I spoke with Captain Jansky this morning. And, and speaking with Captain Jansky, it appears that if we were to cut that deep, that we would have trouble with our accreditation.
Yes.
And so his ask, and the ask on the Department of Corrections was to, instead of four, make it two positions.
And we don't wanna mess with accreditation.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. And so, but, in doing that, and I'll lean on Tim here, that'll get us back to being about $200,000 out of balance, plus the 5,940.
Okay.
So that's your, that's kind of the recap. I think that, I'll say that I, the captain told me that I think we could probably operate if we took, if the four positions were removed via attrition. It would just be very difficult, and you'd also have to then lower some, the population at certain times. So we couldn't, you know, receive some of those revenues. So there, there's a couple of little things in there, nuances, that make the corrections a little bit different in that if you're really wanting to get the accreditation and wanting to have the proper amount of staffing that it calls for, that really two would be more ideal for them.
So two positions at corrections, PA 100,000, Assessor 90,000, 120,000 of, we're talking about, that would be the
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Yep.
Revenue that we increased. What was the next one before the investment in, of 25,000? There was one in between the 120 and the 25.
Oh, yes, or add 25,000 to investment earnings.
Investment earnings?
Yep.
And then an investment interest?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
What, what's the difference in those two? Investment, so the 25,000 investment earnings?
Mm-hmm.
What's the difference in that and invest, in, in interest?
I would defer more to the treasurer's office. Ultimately, I think it's, I think one may, maybe like CDs or something, and the other LG, LGIP earnings or something along those lines. But it's just their way to distinguish some breakdown within their office.
And, and with this, were 200,000 still shy?
If you, if you lower the corrections to two positions that you want to, not cut, but through attrition, not refill, instead of four, then yes, you're, you're gonna be 200,000 apart.
And I might add that in that, with that talk, with the tablets going in there, we're gonna have revenue coming from corrections that we're not even accounting for yet. We don't know what that's gonna be, we're speculating off of what Kennewick's doing. But that could well be 150,000 right there.
It could very well be.
For the year.
That's right. There are a couple of areas where, how do I say this without, we are, it's kind of like you cross your fingers and hope for something. So there are a couple of areas where I think that we have an opportunity to, I'll just tell you straight up. We have opportunities to bring in more revenue. And so one of the areas would be, obviously, if we sold a parcel of land, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's one of them. The other is that if the economic forecast in Franklin County, and if construction stays higher and there's more sales tax revenue, particularly in the later quarters, I think that that's an actual possibility. I don't, and I think so when you, when you say that 120,000 added to sales tax, I think that that is a, I think that's a reality. I think that there's a real possibility that that could happen. If not, what we would have to do, and I know that you gentlemen know this already, is we would have to open the budget back up and then make decisions at that time. But what this allows us to do is to keep our reserve intact.
And that's important. That's something I've been striving to do. We had it up to 2 million at one time, but it got depleted, or close to 2 million, Tim will remember. And yes, that's one of my ultimate goals. Before I retire as a commissioner is to make sure our reserve fund is in place.
Yeah, and I, and if I could, Mr. Commissioners, I, the thing that I would like, just reiterate, and probably the message that we, I could do a better job of explaining to people. Because when we talk in these sessions, it's, we're getting down to brass taxes, and you gentlemen are making decisions, and you're asking for maybe some input or advice. But kind of the whole reasoning behind this, and I, I think people need to know this, is that, and I've heard from each commissioner this too, by the way. And so this is the part that I think needs to get out there more, and the message needs to be a little bit more salient on my part, is that every single commissioner that I talk to wants to get to the reserve fund so that when this happens, that we don't have to go through this again, that we can keep people employed, and that we cannot raise taxes, you know, if we're in that position, that we can get those road funds out. And that's you gentlemen telling me that.
Yeah.
And it's kind of what goes into our strategic plan, which I'm looking forward to kind of being able to deliver that final product as well. But it, it helps us in, in just maintaining a, a better outlook for the long term. And, and I think that that's what you gentlemen are looking for. And, and you've always kind of coined it, and like, you don't wanna hurt the taxpayers and the citizens. And you also, at the same time, I've heard every single one of you, you wanna take care of our employees that are really knocking it out of the park. And, but that message never comes through when we talk about this, cuz we're talking about just figures in a spreadsheet. But I just thought I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, so thank you.
So I just was doing math down through here. So our delta yesterday when we started was 813,000. And so with those numbers put together, we have a delta today of 253,000. So that's what we still have to close the gap on that, correct?
I think it's, you're in the neighborhood. I was, I was thinking that we were like, a little bit closer down to like 200,000. If you, if you figure that each position is, with benefits, is about 100,000. We're in that neighborhood. We're about 250 to 200-ish away.
I just wanna thank all the departments to step forward to help us balance this budget. I think that this is a team effort, and we're getting a lot of team players to work with us. And I really appreciate that because we're looking at the financial distress that our city's in. And I do not wanna be in that position. And I thank these people for working with us on balancing this budget. These department heads and electeds, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, please.
You may have already covered this, or maybe Brian's already done that. But in, in property tax, there is a collected property tax for the veterans that can be used for general fund, only that one.
Yeah.
And I think it's 100 and some thousand dollars, you used it last year.
Yes.
It has to be collected no matter what, okay? We have to collect it. However, or we, you know, the property tax says, you can use that for general budget. Something, I think it's 100 and some thousand, just, just mentioning that.
We have it written in the policy that if we have three years collected that.
Right, you've got way more than that in there now.
I know. We have actually about.
So I just am mentioning that, not saying you should or shouldn't, but.
I'm so sorry, I missed.
The veterans, the veterans fund that, that we used last year.
Cuz that can be used for general.
That's right.
Yeah, and it's 100 and some thousand, I believe we gave it. Anyway, Tim's got the numbers, we already submitted it to him.
Where are we at, Tim, on the veterans fund? I think we got like six or eight years collected.
Last I remember, we were at 900 something thousand in the fund.
It's something we don't like to use because of veterans, we put it in place for our veterans. But it's accumulating, and we're not using it to the degree we thought we should be. And, and that's where we're at right now, Tim.
A little over 800,000 in there right now.
Okay. And what is, what do we collect every year?
The. Yeah. I know, I updated the number yesterday.
If I remember right, it's over 100,000 or close to it?
It's .0125 of, yeah.
So there's that option also. But, you know, like you said, we finally got everything in place for liquidation of, of property, if we so choose go that way. And government shouldn't be into managing aquatic parks or real estate. That needs to be on the tax rolls.
So we bring in just over, the levy for, for 2026, 207,000.
That's how much we're bringing in a year now?
Yes.
Wow. I think that'd just about get us there.
It's your gentleman's call, so that's why I wanted to, but, yeah, that's a, that's one that you could use. There's a, there've just been a lot of conversations about different ideas about what you wanted to do. I think, again, the biggest thing that we're doing so right, right now, is to just be upfront, transparent. Let folks know that we are trying to head off what we see that's going on around us. I will offer you this, yesterday I was making phone calls after I got home. And the horror stories that you've been hearing about from your colleagues across the state are accurate.
Yeah.
In certain counties, there's only the elected official and no support staff at all. Furloughs are happening across the board for a lot of cities I know about, not counties so much, but a lot of cities are doing that. You've read the newspaper recently, cities near us that are, that are quite a ways apart on their budgets. And so I think that a combination of things, I think you've done a very good job of saying no on certain things, and that's hard to do. Because everybody that comes in and asks for a request, they're asking for requests in good faith. And it's not that you don't wanna support that, it's that you've seen these budget cycles before. So, long story short, here's my opinion and the outlook for next year of 2026 is that when we balance and we are able to pass a budget, I think that there is a possibility that we could go into early next year seeing not just plateauing, but a decrease in our sales tax revenue. And then I think it's a real possibility, and reading the tea leaves and some of the economic indicators, that in the latter part of the summer, or early part of the, latter part of spring, early part of summer, we could see it start to potentially go back up. That's represented in the 120,000 added to sales tax. If we utilize the fund that Assessor Rosenell referenced, that would get us basically to balanced. So.
I think we have our, our plan put into place. I, I like it, and I think we should put this into place.
I'd like to see us get that 252 ironed out. I'd like to see us take 100,000 from Superior Court.
Yeah, I'm for that.
I don't wanna see us take anything out of the veterans fund.
Well, we're not gonna take anything out of it, it's just what's collected would go to. If there's other avenues, I'm all for it. Superior Court would be, I'm good with the amount of money they're getting to take 100,000 out of their account if it's possible. Has that already been factored in?
That's Superior Court, they're looking at that.
Tim, did you happen to look and see at the veterans, how much we're using out of the veterans fund every year? After, after we get to Superior Court, that's Superior Court right there?
Yes, it is.
So 1 point, what is it, 1.27 million?
Correct, 1,277,436.
That's, that's just in that line, and there's an additional.
Yes.
There's an additional 100,000 in other lines, at least in the lines that I've got, we've got in front of us.
There are, there are amounts for travel and operating rentals, leases, which probably copier, some repairs and maintenance, interpreter costs. Yeah, there's, there's various things other, other than their main, their main line.
And we had talked about this, you and I personally together, and we thought there was a way there for Superior Court to give up some funds too. So if we can wrestle 100,000 away from them, I'd, I'd be all for it. Now, what do we use a year in our veterans fund? What have we been dispersing?
Veterans fund, I think that there's some ambiguity with our legal counsel as to what, what all that can be used for. So I, that's probably something that we should ask legal counsel on as well. Yeah.
So far this year, we've used 66,000 in veterans.
And we've actually increased the, the amount of money we give for rent, for food. We doubled it, did we not, or we increased it? When that's, we're at 66,000 for the year?
Uh, yes. I believe, I believe you're right.
Last year was 121,000.
We used.
Clerk Alvarez, I was wondering if you could contact the prosecuting attorney's office. It's a, a budget hearing, and it would be helpful right now for some of these questions if we could ask them legal advice.
Is, is there a reason that our legal counsel is not in the most important meetings that this Board of County Commissioners have every year? Is there a reason that they're not here? Sorry, I'm asking you an impossible question.
I, I don't know the answer to that. I just, I would like clarity on the veterans fund and a couple of other things.
Mr. Chairman, I'm extraordinarily disappointed that our legal counsel was here neither yesterday nor today. And except after.
And I made that comment yesterday, and it took 3 o'clock for them to get here.
Before they got here, yeah. In the most, arguably the most important meetings that this board has in a year is wrestling through this, and we cannot ask legal questions, is, I find extremely disappointing.
And alarming.
With Superior Court, some of the, and Tim, you can kind of back me up on this. Some of, like, when you look at the interpreters, some of that's funded, it's not local. You know, it's funded by the Administrative Office of the Courts. So it'll, it'll be a little bit more tricky going through and, and cutting out of there. But again, gentlemen, I, one thing that I would recommend is there, you could go through line item by line item and say, hey, we want you to take this one out and that one out. But the easiest way, in my opinion, to go about this is to say, you know, at the end of the day, instead of, for example, if you were to choose to do this, say, we're just, you know, you've seen that we have declining revenues. This is not a fun thing. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to ask you to make your budget 156,132 dollars.
Make them decide where they're gonna cut.
Or whatever it's gonna be.
We don't, we don't pick and choose where they cut. This is what you're gonna have to do without.
Correct. And frankly, and as particularly as it pertains to separately elected officials, I believe even this, I, I bet you that even the separately elected officials would, would tell you that that's the preferred alternative, because it gives them the power to make the decisions on what needs, you know, what resources are placed where, rather than kind of like a top-down approach.
So if we're not going to have access to legal services, the way that I see it, we have another 153,000 delta. Maybe we should make it up out of the, out of the prosecuting attorney's budget, Mr. Chairman. Because if we don't have access to legal services.
Yeah.
I don't know, if, if, if we don't have access to them, why do they have a budget? I'm open for interpretation, if there's anybody in the audience or anybody has a, has a, you know, any kind of a guess, because we don't have legal here to answer our questions.
Mr. Briggs, welcome.
Jeff, I have a real quick question for you.
You might wanna grab a chair if you got the time, because I think we're gonna have not just one question, but possibly many. And thank you.
Thank you, sir. My question is on the.
Veterans.
Veterans fund, and if the board has a flexibility to utilize that to, in the current, within the current expense budget to balance the budget, or whether those funds are dedicated for a specific purpose that are untouchable other than being used for veterans purposes.
Yes, that's my understanding, is that they're the latter. They're untouchable, they're earmarked specifically for that purpose. I believe that maybe they're.
But in, in our policy, if we have three years collected, we're not, we're supposed to be able to quit collecting the taxes, correct?
That's something I don't know off the top of my head, I have to look into that.
Yes, I, I think that's correct, correct. But I think the, I, I think then the question, yeah, and I posed a question to you earlier, earlier this year on this, on this subject, because, yeah, I think the thought, what's come up has, can you, can you still collect? Can you still collect it but not, but not move that money to the veterans fund? And, and I think you were, your thought was, from my recollection, is no, you wouldn't be able to do that. It's either, it's either collect or not collect.
Right. Well, then it also calls into question, because I think human services has been handling that historically. Is it being billed properly? Or are they just taking, are, are they billing our general fund? And that's something I, I'm not sure of, because it seems odd that we're having these funds accumulate. But maybe, maybe it's just, just the case that we're not expending enough, but.
We're just not expending enough. It, it, that money stays with us. It, they, they access it through our system, but the money is, is in our accounts.
And we've actually increased the amount for their rental and for their food. We've increased the amount that they can get, and we're still not even reaching what we're collecting every year. We're, we're 66,000 this year. Last year, we were 120 that we contributed to the veterans. And we're collecting 205,000, 208,000?
Yes, the, the levy for next year was like 207,000.
So if I can clarify, we have to levy that through my office for that collection, okay? We have to do that .0125.
Okay.
So the taxpayers are paying that.
Yes.
What you can do is you can reduce your budget by that dollar amount if you want to, to alleviate the taxpayers from that dollar amount burden. But we have to include that in the levy piece, okay? That .0125. Same as .25, .025 for the mental health. So that has to be levied. So it's not like you can say, we're not gonna collect that. We have to levy that piece in the levying from my office. However, you can reduce your overall budget by the same dollar amount if you want. And therefore, the people are still paying for that one, but not paying for some of the other. Now, we had this last year where the Department of Revenue, and Eric Johnson dealt with it, confirmed it. I'm not legal counsel on that, but it is, mental health cannot be used for anything other than that.
Right.
But the Department of Revenue clarification last year was that the veterans fund, if you had sufficient enough funds, that money could be put in the general fund. And there's an RCW that covered that. I'm just saying that last year, we confirmed that, and I've got the letters, we can get copies for you.
Yes, send them to me.
Jeff, just so you know. Jeff, just so you know.
Okay.
So, I'm not saying to do it. I'm just saying, this is what you can do. In our understanding, we have to levy the point 0125 no matter what, okay? It's just a matter of, do you choose to put it into the other?
Yep.
Or use it for general?
And at this...
But we have to levy it in my office.
And at this point in time, we have four years collected.
Oh, yes.
In the Veterans Fund.
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Danzel.
I might recommend, so, given that information, I don't know if that gives Mr. Briggs time to maybe look into that a little further. I know that Commissioner Mullen is going to be here after his appointment. And so, I don't know if it would be well with, maybe a good idea for the Board to take a little break to allow Council Briggs to do some research on that and see if we can or can't use that. And then at the same time, it'll allow Commissioner Mullen to arrive, and we can get this in front of all the three. I know it was important for you gentlemen to get this in front of all three Commissioners.
All right. So, if, John, you might want to get those papers for him from the Department of Revenue, so he can over...
If we take a break, I'd rather bring him down to my office, because I actually had my chief deputy dealing with all that last year, and we've got copies of everything.
So, do you know what time Commissioner Mullen's supposed to be here? At 10?
What I would do is I would, I wouldn't say 10. I would say, I would recess us until 10:30.
10:30.
I don't know if that gives... I think 10:30 would be a good one. And then if we have to, what we can do is we can come back in and continue it till later at 10:30 if we need more time.
Okay, so at this time, we'll recess until 10:30?
That will also give us the opportunity, since we kind of know what's...
We are testing. We are back from recess, reconvening the budget meeting here at 10:30. Mr. Danzel. Do we... Jeff, did you have some new information for us on the Veterans Fund?
I did. It might be best just to briefly go into executive session to discuss it with Mr. Rosnow and Mr. Anderson can stay as well with the board and the clerk of the board.
And our clerk of the board.
It'd be potential litigation, just under, like, just for five minutes.
So we'll remove and go into executive session for five minutes. We'll go in at 10:32 and be out at 10:37.
Should I call out the...
Yes, call out the RCW please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter executive session under RCW 4231101I for five minutes with the auditor's office, the assessor's office, counsel, county administrator, the Board of Commissioners, and the clerk of the board.
Second.
I don't think we need a motion. He was just naming the RCW. Go ahead, Mr. We come out of executive session. We need to re-do, go into executive session for another 10 minutes. another 10 minutes. We'll go in at 10:38, come out at 10:48.
Lights will be on?
We have come out of executive session, we need to extend for another 10 minutes, same RCW, so we'll be coming out at 10:58. Thank you. We have come out of executive session, we're back to regular session on our budget hearing. And Mr. Danzal, I'll turn it over to you. I think with the adjustments we've made here, I think we have a balanced budget.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the, to reiterate, the way that we were able to arrive at a balanced budget position was to, through attrition, well, actually, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go with the bottom line here. We've asked for $200,000 in reductions from corrections, 100,000, 95 to 100,000 dollars from the assessor IS, same, 100 and, we've added 120,000 to sales tax revenue, we've added 25,000 to investment earnings, and we've added 25,000 to investment interest. There was, I believe that you gentlemen also wanted to, reduction to the prosecuting attorney's office, so this would be the time for you to speak to that if you wanted to, or I don't know how, how much exactly you're looking to do there, so.
Say that last, that last piece again. You said, you wanted to hear us speak to it.
Reduction to the PA's office.
Yeah, there was, I know, it had been listed that you were wanting to talk about the reduction potentially to the prosecuting attorney's office.
I believe that that number, in, in the context of what we're talking about of making this balance, I believe the, the reduction to the PA's office needs to be 260,000 into this, into this budget to make it balance, as, as we've been discussing.
I think that, yeah, that's, you're well within your, you're in, within your means to do so. I would recommend, if you're wanting to do that, that we ask the elected official be here, and that we have that conversation, open public forum with, with him, because I think that he's entitled to that.
I'm completely fine with that.
Perfect.
I'm, you know, we, we've talked about, at length, about the first in, first out, you know, kind of criteria. The PA's office has had roughly 340,000 added to their budget over the last two years, and it's painful, but I believe 260,000 is appropriate in making this budget balance, and with the decisions that we have in front of us, I think 260,000 is proper. And, yeah, when, when would we have that discussion with him?
That would be, we have until the end of this week to get this done. This, I'm hoping that we have some sort of idea about where we're going with this by the end of the day, so that, or of today's meeting, so that Teresa, Tim, and myself, Mr. Briggs can finalize, the assessor can get all the appropriate paperwork and resolutions done. So, it just depends on, timing wise, we have until the 5th of December.
Is it, is it proper, or to ask, or is there, could we have this prepared for the commissioners' meeting tomorrow? Or does it need to be in its own? Is, is, you obviously can't prepare the, the motion for this meeting, but, but is tomorrow, is that too soon?
Mr. Anderson and I spoke, and we thought that if we got out of here at a relatively, you know, short amount of time, if we got out of here by noon, it'd give us the appropriate amount of time to be able to work with Mr. Rosenau. Mr., we'll have it ready and available for you tomorrow if you get out of here by noon-ish. Anything past that, and I fear that we, we risk making an error, making a mistake, and just moving too fast.
I can appreciate that.
And then, yeah, may I, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, the rea, I think it's, again, this is for total transparency, but when we asked corrections to take 200,000 dollars out of their budget, you had that conversation, when we asked the assessor to take 100 out of his budget, we had the conversation, same with IS. And so, this is just, again, I think, we gotta do this. It might be part of the uncomfortable part of the budget season, but I think we owe it to the prosecuting attorney to be able to come here and let him know that this is what your decision is, and, and if he wants to make a justification, that's fine, but, you know, I think that it warrants the ability to just to have the conversation.
Sure.
Were there any other, again, this is your budget, so were there any other areas that you were looking for me to?
No, I'm good with it right now, the way it sits. I think that gets us well, well into the block, and I think if that's the case, we can probably, because we're gambling with the sales tax of 120. That's a gamble, and I think that the closer we get that to the zero, the better off we're gonna be.
And I just wanted to make sure that we were talking at one time about superior court budget?
Yes, 100,000 there.
I don't know that we've, that was figured into this as well. I don't know that we've, that was figured into this as well, so I don't know.
No, it's not. That one, outside of the, I mean, there's two different pieces. There's the 101, 165, which has their interpreter costs and stuff like that. And then there's the other, the, the other part that's in 101, 721, I think it is now. That really is dictated
Court, and Franklin County becoming our own. Where is that at in the process over there
much more, to my understanding, by, by the contract, where, I mean, ultimately, they,
in Olympia, do you know?
they provide us the number, which is, they compute all their salaries and benefits and
I know that it's been discussed and introduced in the code reviser's office before.
everything, and then they calculate the, what Franklin County's pro-rata amount is,
I know that the lobbyist for Benton County is, is been pushing it for a long time now.
and then they, they provide us a number that's, that's plugged in. And that's what that
I think that it's only, and I've, we've spoken, I've spoken with Council Briggs and others
number comes from, is them doing their formulas on their side, and then giving that number
on this, but I think it's only a matter of time before it happens.
to, to input. And so, as, as far as I understand, I think that's contract dictated, you know,
It is gonna happen.
Yeah, and, and.
Benton County's pushing for this.
There, I, yeah, and to be honest with you, I think it might be a time when we push
so, I mean, I'll change whatever you want me to change, but just wanna have that talking,
for it.
Yes.
And I think, and I'll, the, kind of the one thing that's nice about it is, because the population exists in Benton County, it's just, not that, that this is existing or taking
talking point. Okay.
I'm, I'm writing out, and I'll speak what I believe to be the position that we're
place, but it just is, makes it nearly impossible for representation for Franklin County in
discussing. Give me a minute.
our court system, because you have such an overwhelming number of people that live in Benton County, that it's hard to win that ele, I mean, it's, it's virtually impossible. So, I think that the, the thing that has held us back, and that has been discussed, and I talked with Council Briggs, Council Lloyd, Council Sant, and then as well as the Judge Roscoe, and Mike Killian, Clerk Killian, and I don't know that it really would be. And we would get better value for our, for the money that's spent on it. They would be directly answerable to just the people of Franklin County. And just like their judges, they have the same talking points over there. It'd be, they would have someone that was just accountable to Benton County. And that's really how it should be.
Yes.
And, and we're growing with Pasco, the last part I'd add is, with Pasco being the fastest growing of the three cities of the big, what would they call the big five down here? The, it only makes sense. I mean, it's only a matter of time before we're the biggest out of the Richland, Kennewick, and Pasco, and West Richland, and so on and so forth. So, anyway, I hope I've answered your question.
Yes.
I've got this written out here. Would you like me to read it out, what my understanding is of where we're at, based on the conversations that we've had?
I see Mr. Sant in the room.
Mr. Sant?
Yes, just, just in, from court.
Yeah.
So, Sean?
Do you want me to start, or?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Danzel.
Sure.
Okay. Sean, the, with, I think you've heard about the recent budget issues, the $700,000 in risk insurance increases that we didn't completely budget for. We budgeted for some of it, but we just didn't see a $700,000 increase coming. We were about, really about $900,000 apart from balancing after that, and after a couple of requests, and, you know, trimming away at it. And it's just a big personal belief of mine, and full transparency, and same with the commissioners, that they wanna just be able to talk to you face to face, because they're gonna be asking that you take a reduction in your budget. And I just thought that rather than not doing it face to face and man to man, that it makes the most sense to, to just have you come in. It's our budget hearing process, and I think it's the right way to do it. So, Commissioners, Prosecuting Attorney Sean Sant.
I'll just share where that I'm at, if you'd like. So, we started yesterday morning the budget hearings with a delta of $812,995, as was presented to us. I believe, in order to get to this balanced budget, that we take 200 from Corrections, 260 from the PA's office, 90 from the assessor. We believe that there's going to be a sales tax increase of $120,000 that we can account for, investment earnings of $25,000, and interest on an investment account of $25,000. IS, a cut of $100,000, that is $820,000, which the delta is $7,005. So, that's where that, I believe that we stand at this time.
So, you're asking for a 10%, approximately a 10% cut out of our budget?
So, I believe a first in, first out philosophy, which isn't always, we aren't always able to do it fully like that. But according to the budget over the last number of years, your office has increased three, roughly $340,000. And so, I don't, we, we have to cut somewhere. I don't know how else to do that. We've, we've cut, we had approximately $6 million in ask, in areas, there was areas that, that we didn't have options, where that we had to increase in, in some ways, copier leases, you know, areas. And we didn't anticipate a 55% increase in risk. And, and I'm, I'm open, I'm certainly open to suggestions and ideas, and, and that's where that I'm at right now.
Well, just so the board's aware, we had another position that was not filled, and the board pulled that essentially from our budget from '25. So, the board's already cut approximately $130,000 from our '25 budget with the position that we did not fill, and that.
So, the, your office presented to us that, that you wanted to put, give pay increases to existing staff, and that was the agreement, was that you were going to eliminate that position in order to get that increase to the budget?
For the '25 year.
So, this board didn't take it. That was, that was a part of the agreement to make that, that balance happen.
Yeah, but, so now, $260,000 is what you're proposing. I mean, that's a, I don't know where we would actually cut that, because we basically have employees as our primary cost. We've reduced costs with, you know, printing costs have reduced over the years, going with electronic services, things like that. We are in need of updating our software system, which was included in our package proposed for this budget. Clearly, that would keep us from doing that, so that's gonna be a significant hindrance for, for us in the upcoming years, as we've gone to more and more mobile services with the data collection that is collected by law enforcement. There's a larger need for having access to those type of records for discovery processes that include going to defense. So, I mean, with this, essentially, you would be asking us to cut out a level of service. And so, we would have to go with the lowest priority, which would be property crimes. Those wouldn't get prosecuted. We would have to focus on primary, primarily going after the more violent offenses. And so, that's gonna be, that's the only way we, we could cut. I mean, you're asking for a quarter million dollar cut out of a budget where we really don't have extra services, that we can just absorb that. I don't, I don't know where we would absorb 260. This is the first I'm hearing of it, so I'm gonna have to go through and try to identify where we could cut cost.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I made a mistake here, so I need to, I need to correct it. My proposal would be $160,000 from the PA's office. I didn't get it on here. Superior Court, my proposal would be to reduce Superior Court by $100,000 as well, which would be 160.
I believe Tim talked to that, and that's gonna be probably an impossible task, because it's what they put into their budget. And we are by county Superior Court, and so it's gonna be tough to get that $100,000, you said, Tim, correct?
I think the, the main part of their budget is dictated by, by the contract that, that oversees it. So, I'm not sure.
I think we worked for it. I think we, we asked and make them say no. But, they gotta.
Yeah.
Validate why they can't. Everybody else has given up. I mean, Corrections has given up $200,000, two positions. And I guess, Sean, what I, I gotta say to the, to the position of PA is, with this state and the movement of, of their position on crime, they wanna be soft on crime. I don't see prosecution of low-level crime right now. I just see them being released. So, why do we need to fight to try to put them in jail when our state is hell-bent on letting them out?
Well, I think if you look at what we're doing locally, it's much different than what you see over on the west side, and what you see statewide. I mean, we're prosecuting crimes in all of our courts. We have therapeutic court that has assisted a little bit of the alleviation. That's kind of more for people that have substance abuse or mental health issues. That's one area that we've been able to reduce costs. The problem is, we've still got pending cases of about 300 screenings to go, and that's in addition to all the other pending in custody cases that continue to come in. And that's unfortunate, because as we have a growing community, we'll continue to have an increase of numbers. I mean, it's just, it's just a numbers issue. As, if your population increases, you're going to have more criminal offenses. I mean, we're in trial, averaging almost every other week where we're going to, going to trials. And that's just us trying to keep up with our current load, let alone the pending cases that we have. And so, I've never taken the position that, whether it's property or other crimes, I think there needs to be accountability. We've maximized that in both our district court, as well as our Superior Courts. But, this kind of budget reduction, I mean, we're gonna have to draw the line somewhere, because clearly we just can't do more with less. If we're gonna have to cut a position out when we were already needing to have a position added for this appellate, we're losing, we're gonna recognize one of our longtime attorneys of 30 years, who's retired, but he's come back to help us out with some appeals, which is going to be a significant loss. And not being able to replace that position or other positions, I mean, that's just, you know, we, we have to make cuts somewhere. We just don't have that kind of fat within our existing budget. We've made a reasonable request, I think, for upgrading our software to account for the Axon systems that, that has significantly increased the amount of data collection and burden within prosecutors' offices, not just ours, but others. And so, the software system is, that was a request to be able to, to keep up and manage that, being able to track cases better, be able to, to manage the workflow better. So, obviously, I recognize anybody's gotta make cuts, but that's, that's pretty significant when you look at our, our overall budget, and positions that we have gone unfilled. I, I recognize we did that, as the board recalls, we did that at a time when we were making increases, trying to prevent further loss of people departing the office, going to defense contracts, or going to work elsewhere in a very competitive market. We've been able to stabilize that. At one point, we were down four to five positions. And that's what we're still trying to make up that work for, because crime obviously continued even when we were down four or five positions. So, now we're trying to catch up with those backlog cases. And clearly, this kind of cut would put a stop to that, and it might result in additional cases that just have to go to some other kind of program. Obviously, I like having accountability, even if it means that we'd have to drop things from a felony to a misdemeanor level, making that accountability somewhere else. But, again, we're trying to ask for, I think, which was a modest ask for our software update, and now to have to cut out an additional 160, it sounds like now, we just really don't have those type of areas, I guess, that we could cut that without reducing service.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's my recommendation at this point, is Corrections 200, PA's Office 160, Assessor 90, sales tax increase of 120, investment earnings, those two counts together is 50, IS 100, Superior Court 100.
I don't know that we're gonna be able to do the Superior Court.
Because?
Because.
Our contract says that, that we have to fill those when we have budget cuts, and we can't, we can't, we have to balance our budget on everybody else's back, and they can't participate, or what's the, what's the, the, the explanation why they can't participate in this?
Yeah, the explanation is that we do have contracts in place. And then, on top of that, we can probably give notice. There's usually escape clauses. A lot of their funds come from the state of Washington.
I believe that, that our funds that, from the Franklin County community to the Superior Court is somewhere about 1.4 million, I believe.
I don't have that right on here.
That's just that, that's just that one item.
Yes, and then, and then in their, their other portion of their budget, they have essentially $258,000 in there currently. And that's, you know, a large part of that, professional services contracts, I, I think. And then, there's a big, a big piece for interpreters as well, which the interpreter costs, roughly $100,000, are funded to a large degree by some grants.
So, really close, from the Franklin County community, is really close to 1.4 million?
Adding, adding up to two, 1.4 million?
Yeah, yes, yes.
One of the, one of the things to look at there as well, I was informed that we did, I think through district court, they just funded a position for having an interpreter that's able to provide some services up to Superior Court as well. Judge Roscoe notified, you know, defense that they have that position that is providing interpreter services through our district court program. I think they got a, some grant funding to start that off, but that would hopefully assist some of the cost and expenditures that could flow into Superior Court as well, for that.
Yeah, so this wouldn't, wouldn't quite accurately reflect a full, how's the right way to say that? Superior Court is being subsidized by district court's budget to a level with those services.
That's correction.
I already have, I mean, right now, I've, yeah, we're essentially, right now.
Veteran does 200.
Hey, do you want to add on that?
Add those back in.
Did you know?
Between these two, we're at $30,000, so it's positive. So, if we, right now, we have.
No.
That's being.
I guess that's part of my delivery. I feel like the discussion was.
I think it's more than.
No, I know. But, but this was, we did very specific. So, I'd almost be adding this back in, but then subtracting it back by, by them telling us.
but that would hopefully assist uh, some of the cost and expenditures that could flow into Superior Court as well uh, for that.
Yeah, so this wouldn't, wouldn't quite accurately reflect a full, how's the right way to say that? Um, Superior Court is being subsidized by district court's budget to a level with those services.
That's correction.
I already have, I mean, right now, yeah, we're essentially, right now. Veteran does two hundred.
Hey, do you want to add on that?
Add those back in.
So between these two, we're at thirty thousand dollars, so it's positive. So if we.
Right now, we.
No.
I guess that's part of my. Feel like the discussion was. I think it's more than. No, I know, but but this was, we did very specific. So I'd almost be adding this back in, but then subtracting it back by by them telling us.
Well, that's the question, I guess, that's the. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sant, uh, Commissioners, so.
Mr. Danzel.
And working with uh, Mr. Anderson, um, and looking at uh, some of the other uh, funds that we think that we can move around. Um, it, uh, I know that nothing is a good, is is good news at this point, but if we could make it instead of a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar reduction, if we could make it a one hundred and sixty thousand dollar reduction, uh, I know that it's still not where you want to be. I know that it would still probably uh, cause a a reduction of service. By the way, um, I think that's what the Supreme Court and just the state of Washington in general wants. I, I think they want a soft on crime approach. I think they want people not to go behind bars ever. Um, but just in looking at strictly the budget, I think that number one, you're accomplishing what the Washington State Supreme Court wants, which is a soft on crime approach. And you kind of mentioned it about the where you would have to cut. But number two, um, again, none of it's good news. But it looks to me like, and Tim, I'd like you to weigh in, that we could most, I think we could most likely balance on a hundred and sixty uh, with the other funds that we talked about with the um, all the different maneuvers we've made within investment interest, investment earnings, the corrections, positions, um, all of those, uh, the Assessor, the IS position. Um, we weren't expecting a couple of those folks to step up and do that, so. Think we're in balance?
So here's a quick question too, on the, uh, our, one of our positions serves the therapeutic courts. I want to make sure that that's been calculated to pull funds out of that mental health tax, which is authorized to fund those because that would obviously free up some money back to current expense. Um, if that's being done, I think we have that in our budget. I just want to make sure, double check if you're reflecting that at least like a point two five FTE for one of our senior DPAs to cover uh, therapeutic court, that should all be funded through the mental health tax. So that would free up money in current expense. Tim, is that currently how that's allocated for that position? So there should be a senior DPA position that is funded uh, through the therapeutic court or mental health tax because that mental health tax is designed to cover therapeutic courts as well as things like the um, center that's being developed and things like that, other support for mental health services. Uh, so I just want to make sure that in that budget, it shows that a point two five FTE for one of our senior DPAs is being funded from that mental health tax. So that's get a free up current expense amount.
I don't, I don't believe that's being reflected right now.
So what do we need to do to make that the case? Um, be- because if that support is coming from our office to perform that service, we need to really tap into that available because that's restricted funds. We can't use it for just general matters. But if we could pull point two five of that salary and benefits for a senior DPA supporting the therapeutic court, then that frees up money to the current expense. And that's what would help meet this hundred and sixty thousand dollar, I guess. That's one way to.
So a question, a question on what you're discussing. So a senior DPA, I do some quick math.
Real, real quick, I just had this come in. Um, from a fairly reliable source about tabling the Superior Court budget and get the agreement to review, is that something that we could possibly look at?
Do what?
The Superior Court uh, budget and the agreement to review to make, to see if we're overpaying or if we're, uh, do we have that agreement? Could we, could the, our legal counsel?
Look at existing contracts for that, sure. So on the, the, on the therapeutic, not the therapeutic courts, on the mental health tax and the eligibility that we're discussing, um, as I think through that, um, a portion of that, I think, would potentially be eligible for that as well as the, a, a portion of the therapeutic court liaison from Corrections, I believe would be eligible for a portion of that as well.
Um, that's correct.
If you put those two numbers together, this is, this is a, a guess, but I would say that that's maybe in the, in the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range. I'm not certain of that. Mr. Chairman, if you're willing, I'd love to see us take a ten minute recess to answer a couple of these questions and then, and come back at um, in a minute and and see, I need to use.
We will recess for ten minutes and we'll be back into session at eleven forty one.